You tell them the truth, seeking the truth, speaking the truth. We're KBLA Talk 1580 and we don't black down.
Forty acres in the mews, this is bigger than the music. Yeah, they tried to rig the game, but you can't fake influence.
Who among us doesn't like black music? But Kendrick is right. This moment is so much bigger than music. These are serious times. We've got serious problems and we need serious people who understand that slogans are not solutions. When you want substantial and sober analysis about things that matter to you and the ones you love, this is where you turn. We're KBLA Talk 1580 and we've got your black.
Happy Mother's Day, y'all. Happy Mother's Day. That's what we're on around here all week long. And yeah, and joining me now, somebody who is really trying to help you celebrate your mama. He's been a catalyst for positive change in South LA since 2013. He's a native of here and he's worked on things like increasing wages, worker protections, economic growth, all those things. He is the council member for the new ninth district, Karen Price. Good morning.
Good morning, Dominique.
Are we still new?
Good to be with you and the KBLA family.
Are we still new in the ninth?
We're still new. Every day is a new day. And that's the kind of positive progressive spirit that we want to, that we want to project and expect.
And I mean, and you are everywhere. I see Councilmember Price everywhere. I'm always emceeing something or going to support an event or check out a thing that's happening in the community. And you are everywhere. You're not slowing down. I think it's incredible how many events you not only put on, but actually show up to.
And we just appreciate your engagement, your involvement and advocacy. Means a lot.
Well, it's, I mean, it's a tough time in our city, right? We've got a giant hole in our budget. It's a tough time in our country. We've got 12 kinds of crazy in Washington. And is that why you guys decided to throw a big Mama shindig this Saturday, tomorrow?
Well, we, you know, we certainly want to just recognize the value, the importance of moms. You know, I'm a mother's boy, literally. My mom is going to be 99, is 99 years young, should be 100 in January.
Wow.
But this is a chance for Councilwoman Hutt, Councilwoman Marquise Harris-Dawson and I, along with the Genesee Center, to just celebrate motherhood. It's a family free event. We're going to certainly focus on the importance of supporting domestic violence efforts. But more important, it's going to be a way just to celebrate. Folks of all ages will be there. You know, there could be performances, there's going to be music, there's going to be entertainment. And it's going to be a lot of fun.
Yeah. So the city's three African-American, black council members teaming up together to do this thing at the Michelle and Barack Obama Sports Complex. If folks haven't been there, what can they expect there? You know, talk a little bit about that spot and how it's evolved.
Well, it's a great learning center, part of Dorsey, the campus there, it's been renovated. We're going to be outside. It appears it's going to be a great day weather-wise. And so we'll be outside enjoying the sun and the fresh air as we mix with family and friends. As I said, there's going to be information booths, entertainment, fun games for kids. And so this is going to be a real family-friendly event.
Well, this is actually pretty cool to see the black council members teaming up together and creating something in our community. Talk to me about that collaboration.
Well, you know, eight, nine, and 10, we try to, we try to make sure that we are unified in our efforts. We know that the communities that we represent, black and brown, folks deserve our unified approach to issues. And so we try to do that whenever we can. And especially on events like this, when we're reaching out to our broad community, it just makes sense for us to cooperate, to collaborate, to leverage limited resources. You know, we don't, each of us have to have a Mother's Day event. Let's have one big event. And so that's, that's our thinking.
Oh, yeah, I love that because it can benefit more people.
Exactly. Now, we're also, we're also partnering with the Genesee Center. And you know, they've done some extraordinary work in anti-violence efforts and protecting women especially. And so it's significant that we're partnering with them in this event, raising awareness, raising support for a very important cause.
Right, I guess all of us are, we can take the Nipsey Hussle Proud to Pay model and say, well, my ticket is free. I get to see Dean Ice, Lila James, or Sam Patterson, 1500 or nothing, Sernair, you know, Sonora Dinamita, and then Fernando Pullum. So maybe I'll, I'll kick in a few dollars and support the Genesee Center. Genesee Center specifically helps victims of domestic violence.
Correct, correct. And they have been the real pioneers in creating intervention strategies and prevention strategies that help not just the women and children, but the whole community, men as well.
Yeah, right, anyone who is impacted by this. And I would imagine with the funding cuts that we're seeing coming from federal and state level, based on budget cuts and conservative agendas, we may, they probably need our support more than ever.
Absolutely. Relying more and more on the private sector, on philanthropic sector, on volunteers. All of it's going to be important, raising awareness to making sure that those who need the services can get them.
Yeah, so it's a party with a purpose. We're talking with Councilmember Karen Price. He's over the ninth district of Los Angeles. And we'll continue our conversation when we come forward on KBLA Talk 1580.
The Comedy Connection Series featuring KBLA's Sol Williams, the voice of reason and the alpha male of comedy, Ray Grady. We're going to transform relationship disasters into stand-up material live at Inglewood's Miracle Theater on May 31st at 7:00 PM Pacific Standard Time. My clinical team will disclose all of your dating woes while the alpha male of comedy, Ray Grady, has hand-selected supremely talented comedians to roast all of our tragic relationship choices. I dare you to bring your ex's phone number because Ray, he's going to text it live and the crowd will be sourcing emojis. Tickets are moving swiftly, so don't hesitate to grab yours at themiracleinglewood.com before I diagnose your dating history as a pre-existing condition.
And we're talking with Councilmember Karen Price of the new ninth district. He's one of the folks that's bringing us a free, 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 free Saturday Mother's Day situation. And we're so appreciative of that. Anyone can go, I think it's I Love Mom at Eventbrite. If you want to sign up for free tickets, it's free, but you guys, you guys want us to register ahead, right?
Absolutely. You know, there's going to be food trucks, we'll have gifts for mom, there's going to be activities. Everyone is encouraged to just reserve a ticket so that we can plan properly. And we're encouraging folks to get, to come on the metro. You know, it's convenient, it's close, there's a stop right there. And so we want to make it a day of fun activity that's easy to get to and environmentally safe.
Yeah, they're saying it might be pretty hot. LA Times is reporting potentially record-breaking heat over the next few days.
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, I know you guys usually have cooling stations and different things.
Yeah, there'll be cooling stations, there'll be some umbrellas, they'll, you know, we certainly want to be mindful, but also encourage folks to, to, you know, bring liquids, a hat, and plan on having some fun. Councilwoman Hutt from the 10th district and Council President Marquise Harris-Dawson from the 8th district and I are committed to making sure this is a fun, safe, and inspiring event.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice that we can bring our own, you know, drinks, some water or whatever. And of course, I forgot to mention DJ, Dean Ice. So I'm suggesting dancing shoes.
Mm-hmm. Well, dancing shoes are always appropriate and proper, even on the grass. We want to encourage folks to feel the spirit and conduct themselves accordingly.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think we need it. It feels like it's been a bit of a slog since November, since the election and all of the sort of daily bad news that we get.
Yeah, we had the fire, of course, you know, we're in the middle of a budget dilemma, dance, of course homelessness continues, you know, threat of reduction of city services are all big decisions that not just elected officials are making, but that citizens have to be aware of and be chiming in. You know, we're at a critical stage in our governmental process where we're going to be improving our budget for the next year. You know, the budget is a statement of values, a statement of who we are. And while the mayor has presented a plan, that plan is being dissected and reviewed by the Budget Committee on the City Council, those deliberations will then come to the full council. But also individuals have an opportunity to weigh in and to understand better what's being proposed and how it's going to impact services. So it's a time for us to be engaged and involved at all levels.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds very alarming. I know I heard the mayor, when she spoke at the Center for Black Power, when we presented the people's budget to her urging the mayor to consider taking some of that giant bite out of the budget that, you know, we give to the LAPD and redirecting it to other things and staving off these layoffs. We had hoped that we might get some money from the governor to stop people from losing jobs. It doesn't, it's not looking too promising right now, is it?
No, we'll say that at the federal level and, you know, we're just beginning to see the impact of this so-called tariff strategy. And, you know, experts tell us that the full impact is still going to be coming. And so it's going to be difficult. Prices are going to be rising. We want to make sure that services are going to be available.
So in other words, what it sounds like you're saying is that you're being, that you're prioritizing city services over maintaining those positions, those jobs?
Yes, that appears to be the strategy. As I said, it has not been fully presented yet, but that's an alternative approach to having to lay off thousands of individuals. Perhaps there's an opportunity to have a reduction in some services to preserve jobs, especially in those areas identified as priority.
Do, what, what advice would you give to Angelenos? I mean, obviously you can go to people's budget, but within the structure of the city, if people want to weigh in and express their desires around the budget, what would you suggest they do?
Well, certainly, certainly you can follow the budget hearings. They are live and televised to follow what is being proposed on a daily basis. The Controller, I understand, has a website that permits individuals to, to weigh in on budgetary items and to create a budget on the priorities that they deem important. And then there are the organizations that have offered suggestions. And so there are lots of things out there and I think it's just important that folks review, review them and be involved in discussion as these final decisions are going to be made.
Yeah, and people may not know, we do, Councilmember Price, we do Friedman Friday, every Friday around here. We talk about reparations in the second hour of the show. And we were discussing today about the City of Los Angeles Reparations Task Force, which is through the Civil Rights Department of the City of Los Angeles, and the rollout of that summary, that report, which actually had the support of the same three African-American council members that are presenting this Mother's Day concert. Anything you would point out about that? I thought it was really bold and quite commendable for you guys to go ahead and roll that out, given our current national environment.
Yeah, well, you know, we recognize the importance of it and how it impacts us all. And we have a responsibility as elected leaders, I think, to speak up, to assert those positions that impact the black community especially, but all communities of color and disadvantaged communities. So for us to adopt that position, I thought was important, was strategic. We're going to be watching it very closely. The Department of Civil Rights has been very proactive. And so we expect to consider some measures before the council in time. Just what that will involve, we're not sure yet, but we know we're not going to let the topic go away.
Yeah, so that's, next steps is the, the actual Civil Rights Department comes up with some recommendations and present to you guys? And then you guys move forward from there.
And those recommendations are going to be in conjunction, you know, with input from citizens who have been following this subject and who have some very strong ideas about it as well. Absolutely.
So it's alive and well, reparations alive and well in the City of Los Angeles.
If it's not there, then we want to make sure it stays on the table, you know, along with issues related to, you know, fire recovery and homelessness and city services, you know, we think that that is certainly worthy of consideration as well.
Since you mentioned fire recovery, are you feeling, I mean, I, I feel like the narrative that we're getting in the media and even on social media is really different from what I'm reading as far as the data and the evidence? How are you feeling about the recovery? I know Palisades is not in the district.
It's been slow and painful. You know, I was, had an opportunity to be, be in the area that weekend, the following weekend, and just the devastation was just, and I'm talking about both the Palisades area and also Pasadena, just devastating. And the lives, and of course, we all have, you know, family, friends, friends of friends that were impacted. It's just been, just so, so terrible. And we got to make sure, we got to find a way during this period of recovery that we change things that we can to make things move smoother, you know, to speed up the recovery process, making resources available so that families can get back. And so I just share their frustration and concern that, you know, the red tape is going to slow things down and only those who've got resources and advantages will be able to benefit.
Yeah, well, I know it's not in your district, but I'm glad to know you have your eye on it. What is moving in the ninth?
Oh, yeah, listen, it impacts my district certainly. You know, I've had a lot of constituents who worked in that area, they would have homes and they had businesses, but they were employed.
Right.
You know, housekeepers, cooks, gardeners, nannies. So, yes, the impact has been wide, far and wide.
That's a really great point, not to mention people whose relatives live in the ninth that are coming from Altadena needing a place to stay.
Absolutely, and they've done, and they have done just that, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a great point. It's a heavy lift for all of us. And what else should we be tracking in the ninth, Councilmember Price, that you're particularly happy about?
Well, you know, we made an exciting announcement yesterday, of course, that the Olympic ceremonies, the opening and closing ceremonies are going to be in the Memorial Coliseum, LA Memorial Coliseum, it's a historic venue. Coliseum is making history, you know, it's going to be the only world to host three Olympic Games.
Yes.
Eighty-four and now in twenty-eight. We're going to be sharing those, that honor with SoFi. But nevertheless, the opening and closing ceremonies for the Paralympic Games will also occur at the Coliseum, so we're really excited about that. Just in terms of other activities occurring, you know, June is going to be a very, a very exciting time. We've got a couple of important celebrations coming up. Certainly Africa Day is going to be celebrated in early June. Stay tuned, we're still putting that program together. But again, my colleagues and I are going to look forward to be presenting that. You know, on the fourteenth of June, we're going to be having a grand opening for Anell Woods Park. This is a community park right there on Eighty-seventh and McKinley that's been in process for a couple of years now, named for a local activist, Anell Woods, who was well-known in that community for many years. So that's, that's going to be happening on the fourteenth of June. And then during the weekend of the twentieth, the twenty-first, and twenty-second, we're going to be having a Juneteenth celebration in CD9. And so again, and just encouraging folks to stay tuned, we're going to be celebrating at South Park, historic South Park. Looking forward to having a celebration of food, of music. We're going to be dedicating the Barry White Gymnasium. We're going to be having a Barry White sock hop as a part of the celebration.
Not the Barry White Gymnasium and the Barry White sock hop.
Yeah, Barry White, yeah, all Barry White, all night. Come on out and have some fun. And then on Sunday, we're going to be having a, I'm not going to say a religious celebration, I'll say a musical celebration in the park. And so just inviting folks to stay tuned, that's going to be the twentieth, the twenty-first, twenty-second in the ninth district, South Park, celebrating Juneteenth with our, with our neighbors and friends.
As usual, you've got a whole lot going on. And as, and I'm not sure if you know, I'm headed to Africa in June with African Focus Incorporated. I think it's either our eighth trip there, we're going to Nigeria, Ghana.
Absolutely, that's going to be a great, a great journey.
Yeah, so thank you for all your support over the years.
I didn't hear all of Achilles' comments in the previous section, but congrats to him. You know, he got married recently in Ghana.
He did.
To a Ghanaian. And so just a very exciting time. But I know that you've been with African Focus from the very beginning, as we both have been, and so you've been leading these pilgrimages, I call them, because it really has been an awakening and a way to experience and expose.
Yes, and of course, they gave you an award, a Trailblazer Award this past year. And thank you so much for your support of the trips, for the support of the organization and for always showing up for the community. We will continue the conversation. We're going to get more details on this Mother's Day shindig when we come forward with Councilmember Karen Price and you on KBLA Talk 1580.
She's reclaiming her time on KBLA Talk 1580. More First Things First with Dominique De Prima when we come forward.
I'm Bree Wood with B I N News Now. Black pastors in Graham Rapids, Michigan are disappointed but not surprised at the jury's deadlock in Christopher Church's trial for the murder of black man Patrick Leoya. Pastor Jerry Bishop of LifeQuest Urban Outreach says the justice system needs changes.
The question is, is where do we go from here? There would have been no victory regardless of the outcome. Our city is fractured.
Bishop called for justice system reforms, including police training and mental health investments. President Trump is considering raising income taxes on wealthy Americans to fund the 2017 tax breaks set to expire next year. Congress is debating a budget package to extend those tax breaks. And Netflix is rolling out a redesign for its homepage on TV screens, the first big makeover since 2013. Starting next week, the page will feature fewer titles and more videos. Company officials say the goal is a sleeker design. Get B I N News Now on demand 24/7 on the iHeartRadio app.
Think It Up is an initiative to activate student-powered, teacher-led learning projects. Students and teachers, how can you spark great learning experiences in your classrooms today? Join at thinkitup.org.
This is the KBLA Sports Minute with Ray Richardson.
Both semifinals in the Western Conference and the NBA playoffs are now tied at 1-1. Minnesota pulled even with Golden State Thursday night with a 24-point win in Game Two. Game Three is Saturday in San Francisco. Two Game Threes tonight, Cleveland at Indiana and Oklahoma City at Denver. From the You Gotta Be Kidder Me department, a University of Colorado football fan is suing the NFL for $100 million after former Colorado quarterback Shador Sanders dropped from a potential first-round pick to a fifth-round selection by the Cleveland Browns. Eric Jackson says Sanders' highly-publicized fall in the NFL draft two weeks ago caused him, and I quote, "severe emotional distress and trauma," end quote. Jackson is basing his lawsuit on his claims that the NFL violated Sherman antitrust laws for collusion and that Sanders' civil rights may have been violated. No comment yet from the NFL. No debates, no speculation, just the info you need. That's your KBLA Sports Minute. I'm Ray Richardson on KBLA Talk 1580.
This is KBLA Talk 1580. Talk radio, that's music to your ears. We're unapologetically progressive. KBLA Talk 1580.
With a KBLA Talk 1580 editorial, I'm Tavis Smiley. With so many shows on our station weekdays and weekends, it's hard for me to keep track of all the guests who are actually in studio on any given day. I wish I'd known in advance that LADA Nathan Hockman was coming in studio for a recent interview. Had I known, I would have loved to have personally greeted him and then asked him why LA City Councilmember Karen Price is being criminally prosecuted for allegations of misconduct similar to the conflict of interest violations for which former City Councilmember Kevin De Leon is only being fined. What's that about, Mr. DA? In fairness to Mr. Hockman, it was former DA George Gascon who actually filed felony charges against Councilman Price. I opined then on how these criminal charges against- I opined then on how these criminal charges against Price did not pass the smell test. I was concerned then that this was yet another wayward prosecution of a high-profile black elected, not to mention a waste of taxpayer money. I am even more convinced now that this is a hot mess. To be clear, neither you or I want a bunch of self-serving, greedy, conflict-of-interest criminals managing the people's business inside LA City Hall. But we also don't want selective or targeted prosecution of black politicians. We've seen that movie before, and we don't need a sequel. It's hard to watch Kevin De Leon get away with paying an $18,000 fine for repeated ethics violations, what he calls an oversight, and at the same time, watch the DA's office continue its criminal prosecution of Curran Price for issues allegedly involving his wife's clients, motions, I might add, that were passed unanimously by the LA City Councilman. What are you saying, Tavis? I'm glad you ask. DA Hockman did not start this inquisition, but he certainly has the power to stop it. I have said it before, and I will say it again, fundamental fairness. In the absence of fundamental fairness, we experience a cascade of deteriorating conditions. The erosion of trust, the weakening of social cohesion, alienation, marginalization, the legitimacy of authority diminishes, cynicism and disengagement grow, and ultimately, people abandon civic participation altogether. Fundamental fairness, Mr. Hockman, that's all we ask. With a KBLA Talk 1580 editorial, I'm Tavis Smiley. As always, we welcome your feedback.
KBLA Talk 1580 invites you to join the Children, Youth, and Family Collaborative, CYFC, for their 25th Annual Foster Youth Awareness Walk on Saturday, May 17, at 8:00 AM at Susan Miller Dorsey High School, 3537 Farmdale Avenue in Los Angeles. This community-centered event brings together advocates, supporters, and youth to raise awareness and resources for foster care programs in the greater Los Angeles area. Please register at Eventbrite CYFC 25th Anniversary Walk. Congratulations to the Children, Youth, and Family Collaborative on their 25th Annual Foster Youth Awareness Walk. This is a community call to action from KBLA Talk 1580.
Find a righteous range, and don't be afraid to say what you see. We're KBLA Talk 1580.
Councilmember Curran Price is my guest. Uh, we're talking all things Ninth District and LA, black LA in particular, um, and you have so many exciting things going on. I think folks can tap in on the website, uh, the opening of a park, a Juneteenth Festival, Africa Day.
Absolutely.
And of course...
And listen, and this, uh, May the 24th for Memorial Day, we're gonna be having an Impact to Action reunion, and we're working, impacting, uh, system, impacted individuals and their families with free resources. You know, the formerly incarcerated, otherwise those folks have been in trouble.
Right, and where's this?
They'll be able to get access to jobs, legal aid, educational programs. We're partnering with the Assemblymember Society, Elsere from the 57th, uh, and so it's gonna be an exciting effort. This is, again, uh, gonna be a chance, this is gonna be at the Expo Park, this is Wallace Hannenberg Building, yeah, uh, Memorial Day weekend, uh, from about 11 to 2.
Oh, that's great. And that's, um, and if you guys want to track it, it's cd9.lacity.gov, right?
That's correct.
CD9, I say that because most of the council people and other state lawmakers don't know their websites, but it's cd9.lacity.gov. Um, so for all of these different things going on, uh, we have, Jashandra in the chat wants to know, can or should we bring chairs on Saturday, tomorrow?
Uh, no, it won't be necessary to, to bring a chair. We'll have, we'll have chairs, tents, and tables.
Okay, so all you need is your water.
Yeah, just bring, yeah, bring some water and a hat.
Yeah, probably a hat.
And a positive spirit, and a positive spirit to share with others.
And, and as I say, your dancing shoes, because you got DJ D Nice, I don't think you're gonna be sitting, I don't care how hot it is, I'm gonna be up shaking something in, uh, in memory of my mama.
There you go.
But anyone can come, right? Not just mommies.
Yes, anyone, everyone is welcome, everyone is welcome, and, uh, it's really a community-friendly event, it's time for us to celebrate and to come together.
I hope this is the first annual, I hope this becomes a thing.
Well, you know, we've, we've had, uh, mothers, we've had senior events together, uh, matter of fact, at the, at the Convention Center, uh, but this would be a tremendous, wonderful, uh, tradition to start, and so we're hopeful that folks will come out and join, uh, Councilwoman Hutt, Council President Marquis Harris Dawson, and I. And, and of course, we're celebrating the important, uh, work done by the Genesee Center, uh, as it, as it works to, uh, provide not just understanding, but the resources for those who need.
Yeah, domestic violence intervention and prevention, and one thing that I know from tracking this issue over many, many years, Councilmember Curran Price, is that when economic pressure is on, when prices are higher, when times are tougher, um, it spikes, it goes up.
Yes.
And so these are times when we need to really support, and I commend you guys for, you know, putting this, this consciousness call, but also an opportunity, if folks want to say, hey, I got free tickets, let me donate to Genesee Center, they can do that.
Exactly.
Yeah. Um, so, Pal Mobile wants to know, how, how do we meet D Nice? Um, I don't know if you can help with that, Councilmember Price.
Well, come on out, come on, come on out, and, uh, and, and we'll make sure that, that she gets connected.
And, you know, we got a lot of people in the chat, in the YouTube chat, um, that are standing up in support and appreciation of our black leaders here in Los Angeles and in the state of California, and as our numbers in the population, um, I won't say dwindle, but, well, maybe they are dwindling.
Well, yeah, they're diminishing, certainly, yeah.
Yeah, it seems that, uh, there's always a conversation that we'll never see as many black leaders as we have now, or that black, um, lawmakers, elected officials would become, um, extinct, um, but I, it's, is that how you see it? It doesn't seem like it.
Well, I think, you know, we, we're stepping up to the plate, providing services where they're needed. In fact, most of the black elected officials do not represent majority black districts. That's the reality, you know? And so, uh, we are certainly reaching beyond mere racial, uh, categories, uh, but are focusing on providing services that are impacting the lives of the residents that we represent, black and brown residents primarily.
Yeah, I mean, I, I always love that, because we, we often talk about how we're a small percentage of the population here in LA, and people have a lot of complaints about it, but the fact of the matter is, we, we vote above our weight class, don't we? I mean, the fact that there's only 15 council members...
Absolutely, for the past forty, for the past forty years, we've had three members on the city council, you know, that's, that's a fifth of the council, uh, and, and our population certainly didn't, has not warranted that. Uh, and so, no, it's been a strong history, legacy of engagement, of involvement, of participation, and, um, you know, the Ninth District now is, is about 70% Latino. I'm proud to be the leader, uh, who happens to be African-American, but that certainly, uh, influences my perspective and, uh, my vision and my goals, and so I want to be inclusive and collaborative all the way.
Well, it's, it's a testament to me, number one, we, black people vote above our weight class, number two, we are, and can be and often are, supported by other communities in our, when we show up and provide quality leadership, and number three, um, at a certain point, policy has to outrank both party and ethnicity, right?
Correct. And that's why I support that we come together, uh, that we, that we act in a united way, and that we address those issues that we are all facing.
Yeah. Well, um, tell us again how we can be down with this free party, and how my girl, Pal Mobile, knows services can try to connect with D Nice.
Well, come on, again, come on out Saturday, uh, doors open at 11, uh, at the Michelle and Barack Obama Sports Complex, uh, 5,001 Obama Boulevard, right there behind, uh, Dorsey. Uh, as I said, it's gonna be a free event, but come early and be prepared to have some fun. There'll be music, there'll be food, there'll be, uh, inspiration.
And...
And celebration.
Free, 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 we love free.
And it's free, and it's free.
Ilovemom eventbrite.com.
Yep.
Ilovemom eventbrite.com. I know you have a heart out here, Councilmember, anything you want to leave us with, with your final 60 seconds?
Well, no, again, just on behalf of Councilwoman Heather Hutt, uh, Council President Marquis Harris Dawson, and I, we want to invite everyone out to the Mother's Day Music Festival, uh, at, uh, the Barack Obama Sports Complex, and we're gonna have some fun, and we just hope you come out and join us.
Yeah, we are definitely going to have some fun. Thank you for giving us all a free way to celebrate with mom, or a bonus mom, or, you know, celebrate the fact that we're missing our mom, whatever the thing is, all are welcome. It's, uh, it's a beautiful gift to the community, and I love the way that the black council members do stand together. We've seen it time and time again on various projects and issues, and we appreciate, I appreciate that, for sure.
Well, thank you. Well, we appreciate working for the community.
Councilmember Curran Price, we'll see you Saturday, that's tomorrow.
All right, KBLA family, see you then.
Alrighty. Um, hey, if you've got something to say, the mic is open, if not, listen to me. That's how we roll, 800-920-1580. I'm Dominique De Prima for Unapologetically Progressive, Unapologetically Blackity Black, KBLA Talk 1580.
More of First Things First with Dominique De Prima when we come forward.
Attorney advertising prior results do not guarantee future outcomes.
Founded in Los Angeles in 1986, litigation powerhouse Quinn Emanuel has deep roots in the Los Angeles community. Since 2007, we have litigated some of the largest fires on the West Coast. We are proud to be the only AM Law 100 firm in the country to represent wildfire victims, giving affected individuals, families, and businesses the same focus and individualized attention we devote to our Fortune 500 clients. BTI Consulting has repeatedly recognized Quinn Emanuel as among the four law firms in-house counsel least like to oppose in any litigation, and we are often deemed the most feared. And after securing over $80 billion for our clients in various matters firm-wide, we understand why. If you have been affected by the recent wildfires in Altadena and the Palisades and would like to discuss your situation further, please contact wildfire support at quinnemmanuel.com or call us at 213-443-3050. Quinn Emanuel is proud to sponsor Conversation Live: Altadena Rising with James Farr on KBLA Talk 1580.
Attorney advertising prior results do not guarantee future outcomes.
Nearly 7 million Americans age 65 and older are living with Alzheimer's disease, also known as AD, a type of dementia that affects memory, thinking, and behavior, making everyday tasks challenging. But did you know that black adults age 65 and older are twice as likely as white adults to develop AD? There are things you can do to help reduce your risk for developing AD. Managing conditions like diabetes and high blood pressure is crucial, staying physically active, maintaining social connections, eating a healthy diet, and keeping your mind engaged with activities like reading or puzzles can all contribute to brain health. It's also important to recognize some common signs and symptoms of early AD, such as forgetfulness that causes problems with everyday life, asking the same question a few times in a row, and difficulty concentrating on basic tasks. If you see these signs in yourself or a loved one, don't wait. Early diagnosis and intervention are key to managing AD effectively. To learn more about AD and a potential treatment option, visit treatallzeearly.com. That's treatallzeearly.com. This message is brought to you by AZI.
Hey there, Los Angeles, this is James Lucky Julian, publisher and editor of Los Angeles New Observer. Are you hungry for news that matters to you and African-American communities of Los Angeles? Well, buckle up, because we got the scoop you've been craving. Stay in and know and never miss a beat with our free weekly publications conveniently available near you, or hop on the digital wave and become an exclusive subscriber at OGNSC.com. Don't forget to join the party on Instagram and Twitter, @OGNSCINC, for behind-the-scenes access and sizzling updates. No more FOMO, let's stay informed, connected, and empowered together.
KBLA Talk 1580. We've got a lot to talk about. KBLA Talk 1580 reminds you that we keep us safe. The Live Your Life Organization mentors young women, helping them break negative mindsets and see beyond their surroundings. Through career exposure and hands-on training, they're encouraged to think big, stay focused, and make positive choices. Founded by Nikisha "Mama Boo" Smith, who transformed her life to become a community leader. Live Your Life is changing lives, but they need your help. They're raising funds to keep their new building, open, and expand their program. Your donations will support food, clothes, hygiene products, and holiday giveaways. Visit livelyolife32.com, that's L-I-V-E-Y-O-L-I-F-E-32.com, to help today. This is a community call to action from KBLA Talk 1580.
Ready to order?
Yes. We're earning unlimited 3% cash back on dining and entertainment with a Capital One Saver Card, so let's just get one of everything.
Everything?
Fire everything. The Capital One Saver Card is at Table 27, and they're earning unlimited 3% cash back.
Yes, chef!
This is so nice.
Had a feeling you'd want 3% cash back on dessert.
Ooh, tiramisu!
Earn unlimited 3% cash back on dining and entertainment with the Capital One Saver Card. Capital One, what's in your wallet? Terms apply, see capitalone.com for details.
The conversation continues right now with Dominique De Prima on First Things First.
Yeah, I, I do want to, um, just say her name and, um, you know, rest in power to Kamisha Clark. Uh, she was, um, the Dean of Students at the Spartan College of Aeronautics and Technology in the city of Inglewood, and she was murdered, allegedly murdered, I guess I have to say that allegedly, by a security guard there. He has been arrested, he is in custody. He, um, went and shot two different women on that campus in Inglewood, um, and, uh, Kamisha Clark fatally. So, she was just 35 years old, um, and clearly her life was in an upward trajectory, being, having been promoted to Dean of Students there, a beautiful young woman, and just wanted to send out love, light, and condolences to her family as we track that, uh, and her loved ones. Rodney Hidden Jr., we spent some time talking about him this week. This is the man who allegedly intentionally hit and killed an Ohio sheriff's deputy with his car after, um, law enforcement killed his 18-year-old son. Uh, he was denied bond at his hearing, uh, he will be held in jail without bail, charged with aggravated murder, and, um, he will remain in custody until, uh, the next, the next hearing, um, and, you know, again, no one's condoning murder, but this man has become somewhat of a folk hero because black people are tired of law enforcement killing our children. A lobbying group that represents American car companies, Ford, Stellantis, and General Motors, is going in on President Trump, saying that his latest deal, his latest trade deal, gives preference to British carmakers, imported cars over, um, locally, uh, over American car brands. Surprise, surprise, a deal that, uh, doesn't help American automakers, American workers, not at all surprising there. Uh, let's go to Eric calling us from the city of Carson, good morning, Eric.
Good morning, Dominique, happy Friday.
Thank you, same to you.
I wanted to make a quick comment about, um, Shador Sanders.
Okay.
Um, back in 2014, Deion Sanders had a show, Deion's Family Playbook, and I watched it regularly, and so I watched Shiloh and Shador grow up on TV, and I feel like I know them, of course I don't, but that being said, there's a fan, ironically, his name is Eric Jackson, and he's suing the NFL for a civil rights violation.
Yeah.
Saying that, um, they coordinated an effort to damage Shador's reputation as a quarterback, and the league responded and said that, um, they think it's frivolous, of course, but they're saying that Shador underperformed, um, to avoid certain franchises, and the one thing that I researched about Shador is that he has the braggadocious personality of his dad, and I think that this is all about, um, an attack on his dad to let his dad know, hey, um, we're running things, and Shador just got a little piece of that, um, and I think he should put this behind him and just, you know, prove what he can do, show him better than he can tell him.
Yeah, for sure. Well, I mean, it was being called on social media, you know, a lynching and a, and a buck breaking, a public buck breaking of a, of an uppity black man, spirited young talent, and there may be an element of that, I don't, I don't know, I know the NFL is famous for that, but then there were credible voices like Jamil Hill and, and others saying, well, no, he just, he's, he's small, and he doesn't, you know, he, he doesn't necessarily automatically go in the first round, I'm not sure. But Shador doesn't control that football fan suing the NFL for 100 million, which I, I think is a long shot, I don't think there's... I don't think there's any chance that he'll win that, do you?
I definitely don't think he'll win, but I think that he's sending a message to the NFL. And I have to say, I have an employer, and I don't control what my employer does and doesn't do. I can hold them accountable if they violate my civil rights or other rights. And so I feel the fan is saying that Sanders can't really fight for himself in this regard for obvious reasons. So I think he's making a point, and I guess my question to you would be, since a quarterback is a very high-profile position that's typically held by people of different races, because they, the NFL feels that that position takes someone who's intelligent, someone who can think, and they believe that certain people aren't capable of that, do you think that this fan's get-down is cool or no?
I mean, I don't, I don't know what the unintended consequences are. I mean, I'm always here for a grand statement. Miles, you were one that thought, you know, Sanders was just a smaller quarterback and that it wasn't necessarily a message to Deion or a reaction to his, his personality or anything like that, even though most people did think he was going to go in the first round, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, that was the, the word coming in, but that's, none of us are NFL GMs that make those choice with our jobs on the line, one, to commit to a quarterback like that with all the other situations that come along. What I've heard as well is that maybe Deion would take their job if they didn't perform with the quarterback chosen, as a rumor out there. But no, I'm on the same thing Jamil Hill's on, like, and you guys are right. It's not a funeral for Shador Sanders. He has a chance to go out there and ball and become a successful NFL quarterback. Wins is going to be what dominates, and I feel that we're at a point now where, if you're a black quarterback, look at the last, what, four or five black Super Bowl MVPs have been black quarterbacks.
Right, right.
And MVPs, and Lamar Jackson's got three or four.
The days of Warren Moon are over, right? The days of Warren Moon being the exception are over. We've, they cracked that, they cracked that door open, is that what you're saying?
Right. And I mean, you know, we have quarterbacks like, and I'll, I'll say a name, Dak Prescott for the Cowboys, a black quarterback who's kind of overpaid for his performance on the field. Tua Tagovailoa, who gets hurt a lot for the, and he's, you know, Samoan. And, you know, I mean, we're not, we're past that, I think, as NFL quarterbacks. I don't think the lawsuit holds any right.
Um, yeah, well, I, I do like that fans have spoken, you know, Sanders jersey is the first, is like selling like wildfire, everybody's buying the 0-0 jersey. And that was the most-watched draft, I think, in a very long time. Record ratings for the draft's final day, when people were waiting to see if he was going to, he was going to get a team or not. But I agree with the first thing you said, Eric, it's time for him to ball out of control. If I was him right now, I'd be training like I've never trained before, because I gotta, I gotta be in your face. Oh, draft me fifth round, will you? Ha! Okay, you gonna rue the day. That's, that's where my mindset would be.
Well, I'd like to close with one final comment, maybe from Miles, since he seems to be somewhat of an expert.
Okay.
My cousin is a, my cousin is a high school football coach, and he couldn't answer this question. Shiloh Sanders, who is also a great player, he was not drafted, and so he signed on as a free agent. And so what is the difference between signing on as a free agent as opposed to being drafted?
Um, well, first thing I'll say, that word great is a word I'd be, you know, sensitive on with, you know, unproven rookies at this point. Not to, no, no knocks to Shiloh or Shador, but I don't think that great is the word to, you know, represent their style of play right now.
Such a hard, hard case, Miles. Okay, okay.
But, but I will say this, though, I think that, that late in the draft, neither one of their spots are guaranteed. I think the contract pay is going to be the difference for Shador. I think he is going to be guaranteed to get paid a certain amount, but I don't think their roster spots on the active roster are guaranteed at all, so.
As a free agent, you don't have a guarantee. And, I mean, obviously, it's less prestigious always to be a, you know, not be drafted.
Right.
But he's got a spot, well, he has to earn a spot.
Earn the spot.
He has a chance to earn a spot, but, I mean, that's football. There's always someone trying to take your job. It's like radio.
Here's your chance to be great.
Yeah, yeah, you get a chance to be great. Every day we step up to this mic, we got a chance to be great. Yeah. Well, Eric, thank you for the conversation, and I appreciate it. A great way to go into our weekend, talking sports.
Thank you, and have a great weekend.
And you as well. And don't forget, you know, I talk all weekend, especially lately, when I'm on a tear with my social media, that let's talk online. I'm at De Prima Radio, D-I-P-R-I-M-A Radio. Man, the race conversation, the racial conversation rages on on my Instagram. I'm at De Prima Radio, D-I-P-R-I-M-A, and then Radio. The station is KBLA 1580. We're on every platform. Please follow my YouTube channel, because I finally started uploading almost every day. Please follow the station. Talk back, engage, tell a friend, get our app. Our pods are free wherever, wherever, wherever you get your podcasts. And of course, you can find Miles at Miles Low Music. He has got a product out right now, a great actual, great actual CD, not a CD, whatever, album, whatever y'all call it now, music. So don't forget to tap in with Miles. Tavis Smiley is up next. The best of Tavis Smiley, like my mama used to say. History's now, and we're making it together. Happy Mother's Day from all of us at KBLA Talk 1580.
KBLA 1580 Santa Monica.
I'm Bree Wood with BIN News Now. Black pastors in Grand Rapids, Michigan are disappointed but not surprised at the jury's deadlock in Christopher Church's trial for the murder of black man Patrick Leoya. Pastor Jerry Bishop of LifeQuest Urban Outreach says the justice system needs changes.
The question is, is where do we go from here? There would have been no victory regardless of the outcome. Our city is fractured.
Bishop called for justice system reforms, including police training and mental health investments. President Trump is considering raising income taxes on wealthy Americans to fund the 2017 tax breaks set to expire next year. Congress is debating a budget package to extend those tax breaks. And Netflix is rolling out a redesign for its homepage on TV screens, the first big makeover since 2013. Starting next week, the page will feature fewer titles and more videos. Company officials say the goal is a sleeker design. Get BIN News Now on demand 24/7 on the iHeartRadio app.
Think It Up is an initiative to activate student-powered, teacher-led learning projects. Students and teachers, how can you spark great learning experiences in your classrooms today? Join at thinkitup.org.
This is the KBLA Sports Minute with Ray Richardson.
Both semifinals in the Western Conference and the NBA playoffs are now tied at 1-1. Minnesota pulled even with Golden State Thursday night with a 24-point win in Game 2. Game 3 is Saturday in San Francisco. Two game threes tonight. Cleveland at Indiana and Oklahoma City at Denver.